Even though it's not Shabbat morning, I thought we're going to do Torah study tonight, so I thought we could start with a blessing over study. So may we bring our collective wisdom to our learning together this evening. May we be blessed with the opportunity to engage in meaningful dialogue with voices from our tradition and with voices that are in the room here with us. And may we be fortunate enough to walk away from our conversation this evening with a new insight into how we are connected to this ancient tradition. All right, well, welcome, welcome. So many of you are veterans of our mock trial events and of our adult ed that prepares us for our mock trial event, which is what we're going to be doing here this evening. And these have always been—I'm feeling—I have to say, I'm feeling a little nervous because the shoes that I'm standing in now are very—you know, they're very big shoes. So I'm just—I just hope that I will be able to do half as well as the people that have come before me in this role. So I think in many ways, tonight is a—there's a lot of continuity between what's come before and what we're doing tonight. And in some ways, we are breaking new ground this year with the trial, with the topic that we've chosen, which is Moses. And specifically, Moses's role in the plague narrative, and most specifically, Moses's role in connection with the 10th plague. Bless you. And I think this is new ground for us because, in the past, everyone we've put on trial—we've put on trial for an individual—potential individual transgression. We have never looked at a narrative—as we're doing this year—that goes to the heart of who we tell ourselves we are as a community. And it's at the very basis of our tradition, this story of the Exodus. This is the creation of the Jewish people, and we are going to be kind of poking under the hood in a way that people do not typically do with this story. So I think it has a little bit of—it has a little bit more of an edge to it in that respect because our own—we have—we might not even be aware of how much investment we have in a particular dimension of this story of the Exodus. So we'll find out, we'll see. I wanted to say that among scholars of religion, there especially Jewish and Christian scholars and probably Muslim scholars as well, there's this notion that's developed over the last two or three decades of something called a troubling text. So a part of the sacred tradition that is—feels like there's some discontinuity between the text and the reader situated in the modern—in the—you know, in the 21st century. And so a question arises, how do we deal with a text that comes into—that's part of our tradition, that's part of perhaps—has a regular cycle that we encounter in our tradition, but it evokes ambivalence within us? And how do we—how do we deal with that? So there are—there are some really good examples of texts that have been identified as troubling texts in Jewish tradition. There is some of the texts in Deuteronomy where God orders Moses and the Israelites to wipe out the seven nations of Canaan, you know, everything, you know, men, women, children, you know, were supposed to be completely wiped out. That's a—that's been a troubling text for a while. There are some individual troubling texts, like the story of—in Judges, of the daughter of Yifthah, who Yifthah is a hero, and he—and he—right, Jephtha, I guess, maybe—it would be the translation into English. And he goes out and he has a successful military—or he vows a vow before the battle, and he says, "If I'm successful, I will offer as a sacrifice the first thing that meets me when I go home." And so he is successful, and he goes home, and his daughter comes running out to welcome him home and congratulate him, and he has to keep his vow, and he has to offer his daughter as a sacrifice. And so that's certainly a very troubling text. The text of the 10 plagues has not so often, as far as I'm aware, been included in this category of troubling texts. And really, what we're doing tonight is we're putting it into that category. And we're going to see how we might work with it from that perspective. We're hopefully going to get a little help from Rabbi Jonathan Sacks, Lord Rabbi—Rabbi Lord—I always forget which order those titles go in. But we have a little bit of support from him—from his relatively new book, Not in God's Name, which I have been reading and really finding very inspiring. And then I think we also have recourse to—within the reconstructionist tradition, this whole idea of evolution, and that there is—there are changing views of what things mean over time and across different cultures, and we may—we may draw on that as well. So that's where we're starting. I'm going to hand out—I have some sheets, and I apologize that these are double-sided sheets, and the way that they got printed out was not exactly how I intended. This has been happening recently in our office. Our machine— I was trying to get—I—I did—I think I went maybe a little—got a little overly enthusiastic in terms of the amount of material that I brought this evening, so we'll—I wanted to—even bringing three double-sided sheets felt a little—I felt a little guilty about that because normally my limit is two. But there was just—there's a lot, there's a lot to look at. So we are going to—I want us to read through—most of this is our—the most of these are excerpts from this book, Not in God's Name, Confronting Religious Violence. But the bottom three paragraphs are from an interview that Rabbi Sacks did with NPR last fall, I think, right—you know, about—the book as it was coming out. So I'm going to ask Brian—is it okay for me to ask someone to read, even though that won't—that won't pick up on the video? Do you think that's okay? Oh, I—I take the mic. Oh, there we go, there we go. Great, okay. So if someone would be willing to read paragraph—the first paragraph?
You.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
You're welcome. Starting with violence.
Violence, yeah.
"Violence has nothing to do with religion as such. It has to do with identity and life in groups. Religion sustains groups more effectively than any other force. It suppresses violence within. It rises to the threat of violence from without. Most conflicts and wars have nothing to do with religion whatsoever. They are about power, territory, and glory, things that are secular, even profane. But if religion can be enlisted, it will be." Here, welcome.
So one of the first things that Rabbi Sacks does in his book is he establishes his—you know, very clear case that religion is not the source of violence in our world. He makes an argument that belonging to groups is the source of violence, and he's going to talk a little bit more about that, that anytime you belong to a group, you divide the world between us and them. And when you divide the world between—and that can have some—you can get benefit from that, too, but it has—it has a challenging side to it in that it creates—it creates this out-group in the same way that it creates an in-group. So that's his first—the first part of his argument is that there's just this—humans are drawn to being in groups with one another, and one of the things that happens is that we can become very suspicious of those who are not in our group. Okay, let's go to the next paragraph, anybody? Donna?
So, "We are angels and we are demons, angels to those on our side, demons to those on the other side. This follows from the human instinct to form groups. Groups unite and divide—they divide as they unite. Every group involves the coming together of multiple individuals to form a collective us. But every us is defined against a them, the ones not like us. Our inclination to act well towards others, whatever its source, tends to be confined to those with whom we share a common identity. Our radius of moral concern has limits. The group may be small or large, but in practice, as opposed to theory, we tend to see those not like us as less than fully human."
Thank you. You know what, actually, Donna, would you just do that last little paragraph?
"The world's great faiths have said sublime things about love, compassion, sacrifice, and charity. But these noble sentiments have often been confined to fellow believers—or at least potential fellow believers. Against nonbelievers, members of another faith or none, or those of our own faith we deem to be heretics, religion can be brutal and pitiless."
Okay, so he's—he's—he's being pretty forceful here, and it's—it's—it's one of—the one of the things that's amazing to me about this book is where he's coming from in his own religious context. He is, you know, a traditional Orthodox rabbi, and he—he—I'm—he also happens—he has a PhD in philosophy, too. But he was the chief rabbi of Great Britain for almost two decades, and he—he just has some—an amazing range of perspective that I'm not used to encountering—I'm not used to encountering from people who are coming out of the Orthodox world. So, all right, so religion—he—I don't think he said this explicitly here anywhere, but apparently, he quotes research that says that religion is—can inspire people to acts of kindness and sacrifice more effectively than any other force known to humanity, that communities that are religiously based have a higher percentage of people who do volunteer work, a higher percentage of people who reach out and help other people. But again, those actions—not always, but there's a tendency that those actions will take place within the defined, you know, boundaries of the group, and not necessarily as often going beyond those boundaries. And that is what I think, you know, we—any modern religious person has to—you know, that's a challenge that we have is working at going beyond the boundaries of the group. All right, so he lays out this problem of violence that can erupt when you're when you're part of a group against another group, and that religion can be a part of that but is not the source of it, probably. And then he's going to start working on a solution, which for him involves a rereading of the Genesis narrative. And so we're going to hear what he has—a little bit about what he has to say about that. Would anyone on this side of the room? There you go, Eric.
Genesis is structured around a series of sibling rivalries, Cain and Abel, Isaac and Ishmael. And what I've argued is, a superficial reading of these stories always says there's a chosen one and a rejected one. But actually, it's not hard to see if you, without any preconceptions, read the story. Keep going?
Yeah.
For instance, of the birth of Isaac, when Sarah says to Abraham, "Send away that slave woman and her son Ishmael," and we see Hagar and her child Ishmael going out into the desert in the midday sun, and their water supply runs out. They're both about to die. Hagar can't bear to see her son Ishmael about to die, and there is no way that you can read that story without your heart going out to Hagar and to Ishmael.
In other words, our sympathies are enlisted not for the chosen but for the other, the apparently rejected one. And if you can see that in all of those stories—so what you are seeing is that, on the surface, these are stories of God choosing X and rejecting Y. But read seriously from a position of some maturity, we can see that God's choice is not like that. His love is not like that. To love X, He doesn't have to hate Y. To choose X, He doesn't have to reject Y. In other words, the very theologies that Judaism, Christianity, and Islam have at the roots, and that has caused such violence between them through the centuries, may actually represent the wrong way of reading those texts.
Okay, so he spends an entire section of his book exploring what he calls a counter-narrative. And he was just basically talking, he was summarizing it right there, that, yeah, on the surface, it looks like this is a story about—and we say this all the time, that, you know, it's about the younger displaced and the older because—and we even have a—we even have kind of a philosophical construct around that that says, oh, well, in the ancient world, the older always gets the goodies. And so along comes ancient Israelite religion, and eventually Judaism says, ah, that's not how it works. The person who's deserving gets the goodies, you know, the person who's—who should be the—you know, the inheritor of the tradition is the one who should be chosen and not based on birth order. And we think, oh, that's the—that's the radical new insight, or one of them, within Jewish tradition. So Rabbi Sacks says, no, that's not—that—that is a misreading of Genesis. And in fact, Genesis goes out of its way to inspire us to feel empathy for the non-selected characters in the story. We feel more—and—and we see it all the time when we're when we're studying the text, right? You know, how many people—we're studying the Genesis stories, and people are like, you know, Jacob is just not that nice a guy, you know? He tricks his brother, you know, he blackmails his brother out of his—out of the birthright because, you know, he's hungry. And then he's—with his mother's help, he steals the birthright. We've had many conversations like that, you know? And, you know, Sarah certainly doesn't come off as being that nice a person when she tells Abraham he's got to kick Hagar and Ishmael out of the camp. And so the—the emotional—the affective connection in these stories, according to Rabbi Sacks—and I—I wouldn't debate him on this—is actually with the—the figures that are not identified in the line of Abrahamic succession, which, until the modern period, you know, it's interesting that—one of the things that happens in the rabbinic midrash is that those characters—the non-succession characters get turned into these monsters, right? Esau becomes a monster in the Talmud and in the midrash, and Ishmael does not look very good. And I think one of the reasons that may be happening, reading Rabbi Sacks's analysis, is that it's difficult to be from a tradition where the core sacred text actually makes you feel more sympathy for the outside person than the inside person. So I think that one of the things we should be doing this evening is rereading the Exodus narrative to see if we can identify a counter-narrative in the Exodus story. You know, many, if not all of us, go to Passover seder's on an annual basis, and we've probably been doing that for many, many years. And it may be that at some of those seder's, you or another person have raised questions about the killing of the firstborn, let's say, or even the plagues as a whole, that, you know, the entire—specifically around the fact that the entire Egyptian population is affected seemingly for choices that are being made by their autocratic leader. And so I think if we go and look at that narrative, and we want to be looking for ways, in my mind, that distinguish between Pharaoh and other Egyptian actors in the story—that's one—that's one piece of the counter-narrative, I think. Because I think one of the ways that we are lulled into accepting this story at face value is this idea that Egypt is monolithic. You know, Egypt is this—you know, this house of bondage. It's—everything about it is about enslaving the Israelites. And to the extent that that image is not completely supported by the text, I think there's a counter-narrative present there. The other thing I think we need to look at, or we might be on the lookout for, is the descrip—in the descriptions of Pharaoh, and how monolithic is he, or is he actually a more complex personality than he is portrayed in a typical Seder context, where he's basically, you know, this really nasty human being who who just has it out for the Jewish people? So those are the kind of directions that I'm personally interested in, but you may—you may find other things as we go through the text. So I'm going to hand out another page that's got all biblical material on it. And thanks, Greg. Let's see. That should be enough. Did everyone get a copy? Was enough for everyone to have their own copy before? So we could have an interesting conversation about, you know, where does the Exodus narrative really start, right? How far back do we have to go? And I—I made a decision that we're starting at the beginning of the Book of Exodus. You could theoretically go back a little bit further than that, right, into Genesis. But we're going to start at the beginning of Exodus, and we're going to start with the—the arrival of a new ruler. And of course, the Israelites have now been in Egypt for some amount of time because they came down originally to escape the famine in Canaan. And because Joseph had achieved such a high, powerful position, he was—he was able to help his family, his extended family, get food and places to live, and they—they had things going pretty well for them in Egypt until this new—this new king arrived. So who would like to read for the first paragraph, Exodus 1:6? Anne? Here you go. Would you be willing to do this?
Okay. And Joseph died, and all his brothers, and all that generation. And the people of Israel were fruitful, and increased abundantly, and multiplied, and became exceedingly mighty, and the land was filled with them. And there arose up a new king over Egypt who knew not Joseph. And he said to his people, "Behold, the people of the children of Israel are more and mightier than we. Come on, let us deal wisely with them, lest they multiply. And it come to pass that when there would be any war, they should join our enemies and fight against us. And so get them out of the land." Therefore they did set over them taskmasters, to afflict them with their burdens; and they built for Pharaoh treasured cities, Pytham and Ramses. But the more they afflicted them, the more they multiplied and grew. And they felt dread because of the people of Israel. And Egypt made the people of Israel serve with rigor; and they made their lives bitter with hard slavery, and mortar, and in brick, and in all kinds of service in the field, all their service which they made them serve was with rigor."
Okay, all right. So this is a story that many of us have heard many times, and sometimes it's hard to allow ourselves to—to see a text as—without any presumption or assumption that we're coming—we're coming with. But if we're reading from the perspective of—we're trying to get a little bit more of a nuanced sense of the—of—the Egyptian situation, of Pharaoh's relationship to the Egyptians, is there anything in here that jumps out at you that provides anything like that? Yeah? Margie? Okay, right. He seems—yeah, Pharaoh seems a little bit confused or acting in a kind of a paradoxical way here, and I think that's—and why did he—he seems to be afraid, and at the same time, he doesn't want—it's like he doesn't want them there, but he wants them there. And so what's going on with that? And so he's got—he's got some ambivalence. I think that's—that's—I think that's helpful. He's kind of ambivalent about the Israelites because he's drawn—he wants them, you know, he feels—he's drawn to them in some way, but he's afraid of them. So the break at the beginning of the story, there's a relationship, there's an absence of relationship where you would expect they're not—that we'd expect there to be some—some kind of knowledge or relationship that isn't there, and it doesn't really tell us how it came to be that way. How did it go from Joseph being revered in Egypt to this core sense of fear and revulsion that that at least Pharaoh seemed to be feeling, and maybe other Egyptians as well? And there's no—there's—the Torah is silent on that, so that's—Donna, you want to say something, then, Greg? Okay? Okay, all right. Here, why don't you?
If we want to think of this, however, in a recasting or recontextualing of our recontextualization of our understanding of Pharaoh, the thing that struck me is the phrase or the sentence around the fear that Pharaoh and the Egyptians have, that if they were beset by enemies, that the Israelites would now become their enemies and ally themselves with their enemies. And so there was a real threat that the Egyptians felt.
They clearly had a sense of fear, and to maybe bolster that fear, this kind of almost unnatural increase in the growth of the community happens before there's any persecution that takes place, right? I mean, it's—it's—I like—that was kind of like—when I was rereading it, I was like, oh, that's interesting. I always thought of that as happening after the hard labor was imposed, that there was a increase in the numbers. But no, that was going on from—the from the get-go. Barb?
My understanding is that Joseph was part of Pharaoh's court, but the rest of his family was not. They were given a different area to live in. And so there may have been a disconnect even before there was a new Pharaoh.
So, so, okay, so maybe because the connection really only existed between an individual Israelite, Joseph, and Pharaoh, and so—and Joseph—and this disconnect happens after Joseph dies, right? So Joseph dies, and then there's a new Pharaoh from somewhere, we don't know where, and the combination of those events might—might lead to this disconnection.
Actually, this reminds me of the history of the relationship between Mohammed and the Jews, because there was a time when the Jews were not trusted by the early believers of Islam. And they were not trusted because they thought, again, in the same words, that they would take the side of the enemy. If an enemy came—to—I mean, it's in the same—in the early parts of the Quran, where it talks about this. So it's just very interesting that whenever—it—well, in these two instances, when it comes between our relationships of people in other lands, that there is this distrust of the Jews. Maybe that's paranoia on my part, but it happens again and again historically with—look at Purim and the whole thing. So that's our history.
Right, no, that's a good—that's a great—that's a great point, right, that this is—a—this is something—this is a pattern that has seemingly recurred throughout throughout Jewish history. And, you know, our tradition has been one of having a fairly strong maintenance of our cultural identity, right? We—you know, we have not been a group—I mean, this is—I—I—no, this is going to be too—it's more varied than this. Because we have—there have been times and places where Jews have been open to assimilating into a larger culture, but I think that's probably—and not that—without making a value judgment on it either way, you know, just in terms of how open has the Jewish community been, and—conversely, how open has the broader, non-Jewish community been to having Jews, you know, participate in a broader society, too? So—but it is, there was a separation. So, but it is, there was a separation, there was a separation and ultimately a mistrust that grew out and it came out of this fear, out of a, you know, potential military conflict. So again, back to the Sacks analysis of, you know, when you're in a group and you are, you're very devoted to the people inside of your group and you are suspicious of people who are outside of your group and you have to be worried about your group being safe. And so if there's another group that you're in a relationship with, you have to wonder, is that group going to support my group or is that group going to become a threat to my group? So that seems to be one of the challenges we have as human beings. All right. Let's go, that was, that was, that was good. Let's go to the next paragraph. We're jumping now further into, this is the whole conversation that, how Pharaoh decides to deal with, now he's already imposed, he's already imposed hard labor and now he's going to go to the next step. Who has not read, who would like to read? Greg?
And the king of Egypt spoke to the Hebrew midwives and the name of one was Shippur and the name of the other, Puah 16. And he said, when you do the office of a midwife to the Hebrew women and see them upon the stools, if it is a son, then you should kill him. But if it's a daughter, then she shall live. But the midwives feared God and did not, I guess it should be, did not do as the king of God commanded them, but saved the male children alive. And the king of Egypt called for the midwives and said to them, why have you done this thing and have saved the male children alive? And the midwives said to Pharaoh, because the Hebrew women are not as the Egyptian women, for they are lively and deliver before the midwives come to them. Therefore God dealt well with the midwives and people multiplied and became very mighty. And it came to pass because the midwives feared God, that he made them houses. And Pharaoh charged all of his people, saying, every son who is born, you shall throw into the river and every daughter you shall let live.
I think this is one of the greatest stories in the whole Torah, this story about Shippur and Puah. There is a debate, there's a longstanding debate about whether these midwives are Israelites or Egyptians. I don't think the story makes sense if we see them as Israelite, as Israelite ethnically. Because how could Pharaoh think that he could get Israelite midwives to kill Israelite babies? There's just no way. I mean, it's, the fact that he thought he could get any midwife to do it is kind of mind boggling, right? Because that's, because of the nature of the profession, but certainly not people from the very community. So I have to read this as, these are Egyptian women and, you know, Egypt was a, was a, in the ancient world, Egypt was at the pinnacle of culture and science. And so I imagine that anything medical that happened, the Egyptians were seen as specialists. And so that's why I imagine that these women were Egyptian, because they probably had schools to go to where they could train to become midwives. And they, you know, we often talk about this as the first example of civil disobedience, where these women refused to do something that they thought was, that was just immoral and they wouldn't participate, you know? And they had a very creative way of resisting without, you know, getting themselves killed in the process. But I don't know that we often think about the fact that if we read them as being Egyptian women, you know, what this says about a range within Egyptian society of how people related to the Israelites. And so I just throw that out as something to consider, that we hear, very early in the Exodus narrative, we have perhaps these two Egyptian women who are very positively disposed, or at least positively enough disposed towards the Israelites, that they are, you know, willing to help and take some risk to do so. Righteous Gentiles in our contemporary parlance. There is one other thing about this that we could, you know, that gets, I think, just skipped over and it's subtle, but in the last verse where it says, Pharaoh charged all his people, saying, every son who is born, you shall throw into the river and every daughter you shall let live. It doesn't say every Israelite son, you know? It's like he's so maniacal, he just, he's so, he's so obsessed with killing Israelite children that he's willing to have every boy in Egypt, which is crazy, right? And maybe, you know, maybe there are other ways to read it, but there are, there are traditional commentators who say that he actually is ordering his own people to kill their own children because that way, if every boy is wiped out, then at least he can be sure that every Israelite boy is wiped out. Then there's not, then he doesn't have to worry about, you know, just getting people to go just to the, over to the Israelites. So he, he seems like he's, you know, way out there. Alan?
Yeah, yeah. So that phrase, being yireh Elohim, being in awe of God, or sometimes it's yirat shemaim, being in fear of heaven, is kind of the colloquial way that the Torah uses to say they had basic ethical standards or moral standards, that that was, and it is kind of interesting that that's how it's expressed. But they aren't the only non-Israelite biblical people who seem to know about the Israelite God and have a relationship with the Israelite God. So they're not unique in that way, but it is, it is a little bit, it kind of catches you off guard. But yeah, they were, they were basically good human beings. That's how, that's how the tradition reads that phrase. And they, and they knew what was right, they knew they're right from wrong and they weren't gonna, they weren't gonna do something immoral, even though they were being ordered to. So being in relationship as midwives with their clients and it's intimate and the presence of that relationship makes certain things impossible that become possible when there's that disconnect that Alyssa was, so that's kind of a nice, that's, that's helpful. That's helpful. So where is relationship present and where is it, where is that disconnect happening? Alyssa?
Why the Jews didn't rise up. And it just made me think about how the Jews must have not had, the Israelites must have not had a societal structure that was autonomous enough to survive without the Egyptians. Because otherwise, why would the Egyptians be able to persec, to begin laying taxes and burdens upon them without them challenging that, right? And then I was thinking about other historical systems and how the persecution has grown and grown to a point where you can get to this place of doing strangely impossible seeming things like killing the child right after it comes out of the mother. And I don't know, so that doesn't seem so odd to me that it could be Hebrew midwives, especially because it says Hebrew midwives. And I just keep getting stuck on that. And in my mind, it came up that like, you know, black slaves, their families were split up in so many different ways and that was done by, I mean, with the consent, or, well, there's so many ways to think about that, but there was the fact that like, black people bought into that because they were reliant on this overall systematic oppression. So I just, there's, the thing about the power, the power dynamic makes me think that it's more possible that that could be happening, I guess? Does that make sense?
Thank you. Carol, did you want to tag onto that? Okay, all right.
One thing in both these things, you know, I think in some ways we're looking like, in the first with Joseph, not knowing Joseph, but Joseph was so assimilated into Egyptian culture and, you know, his family may have been living elsewhere. I mean, what I find puzzling in all this is, you know, we keep looking at it like the Israelites were an identified nation. I mean, that happens, I mean, talk about revisionist history. So I don't think there was any kind of structure. I mean, I'm even wondering how people would identify as being Hebrew or Israelites. I mean, supposedly they would, but you know, there's examples before of what Rachel taking the idols. I mean, I think they were pagan people, I mean, a lot of disparate people that, it's hard to know how they had that identity, you know, in general.
Right, right. Yeah, that's like, cause this is still, you know, maybe still kind of like an extended family clan situation, right? I mean, they've all, you know, descended from the same person. Sue?
Okay, they were all of a tribe, whether it be Dan or Benjamin or Simon or Judah, remember? Cause the tribes were set up at the time of Jacob, at the time of Joseph, with the brothers. Yes, that's right. Yes. So that maybe if they didn't all identify as Hebrews per se, they were all related to this one big group of people that came from Canaan and in once upon a time. So they were only, you know, they were all related actually, if you look at it, to each other. Yeah, there's a lot of, when we have, you know, Israel being Israel, at the end, they were still tribes. The 10 tribes went north and the two tribes stayed south. So all their lives, they were tribes. If you were, if you were, what is the one that redeems your son? I mean, redeems the, the Levites, right? Okay, the Levites or one of, you know, Cohan, you were always a Levite or a Cohan. You never lost that identification.
Like anthropologically, tribal systems as we know them don't work past, they just don't work past a certain number. Like they don't identify as tribes anymore using that language because a tribe is a small group of people that can move. And maybe identifying like that common ancestor, yeah, I just, I guess I don't agree that they would have had such a strong connection to each other anymore. A common ancestor doesn't necessarily mean that you have a stronger connection to one another.
So we, you know, we can't really know how large these groups were, right? Because I mean, the Torah does eventually tell us that when they came out of Egypt, there were 600,000 males above the age of 20, you know? But that's, you know, that could be, maybe, maybe it was a fraction of that number and, you know? So, but I, they're probably, you know, it's, one way or another, they're probably in some kind of a transitional phase, right? I mean, they came to Egypt as a clan of 70 people and presumably they have, you know, grown a lot larger than that by the time that, although, you know, it's not even clear exactly, you know, maybe a generation or two is what we're talking about, maybe not even, I mean, it's not like that much time has passed. So it's, it's, the text reads as if more time has gone by, but it's not. Because if, once we, you know, when we get, we find out that like, you know, Moses himself is only three generations removed from Levi, who's the son of Jacob. So, and, you know, there's already, there's already been some time that's gone by by the time Moses is born. All right. So we've got the midwives question, we've got the Pharaoh question, we've got the question of what, you know, what kind of, what kind of cultural structure exists or doesn't with the Israelites? I'm thinking, we are gonna, I want to, I think we're gonna need to jump pretty soon into the rabbinic stuff. Well, so I'll just say, the next paragraph really deals with the daughter of Pharaoh and her rescue of Moses. And again, I just think that's, you know, it's, we always read that as a nice story and it's, you know, and it's, it's good in contrast to the otherwise oppressive nature of the story to see this bright spot of, you know, and it's Pharaoh's daughter of all people. But I think, especially in combination potentially with the midwives, that these two stories together make a statement about, you know, a different kind of attitude within Egyptian society towards, towards the Israelites. And Pharaoh's daughter even articulates that she knows that this is one of the, this is one of the Hebrew babies. And she, you know, she willingly goes against her father's law that he has, that he's required everyone to obey. All right. Let's, let's go to the next paragraph, Exodus 7, and then, and then we'll see, maybe a couple more. Actually, you know what? Let's skip over that too, actually. I'll just tell you that in Exodus 7, one of the things that I, one of the reasons I put that in there is because we get to see from God's perspective what the, what God's motivation is for doing this whole, you know, engaging in this plague, you know, in bringing plagues on the Egyptians. And initially, all God talks about is wanting to free the Israelites. But then, as the, as the narrative moves on, there's this whole other educational objective that seems almost to dominate God's intention in this story. And it moves from where the main thing is being freeing the Israelites to, I have to teach the Egyptians a lesson, the Egyptians have to recognize my power and the people all over the world have to recognize my power. So that's, I just think that's, you know, that's an important dimension to the story that we don't always focus on. But the Israelites groaning under oppression is what sets the process in motion, but really it goes way beyond that pretty quickly. And already by chapter seven, God is talking about, the Egyptians shall know that I am the Lord when I stretch forth my hand from Egypt and bring the people of Israel out from among them. So that's, that's a piece. All right. Chapter eight is the first time, we're already into the plague, the plague narratives and we have the plague of Lys. And it goes, this goes on to the top of the next page. This is the first time, I think this is the third plague, this is where Pharaoh's magicians can't mimic what Aaron and Moses can do in terms of they're using the staff of God. And so already the magicians say to Pharaoh at this point, this is the finger of God. So they're, they're already raising questions at plague three about this whole project. But Pharaoh, of course, is not interested in listening to them at that point. Okay, the next text. We are now on to the plague of cattle disease. And here, what I thought was important or interesting in verse 20, because Moses warns Pharaoh about, I'm sorry, not cattle disease, this is hail. And Moses warns Pharaoh and all the Egyptians that if they stand outside in the hail, they're not going to survive, because this is going to be, you know, hail like they've never seen before. And so in verse 20, he who feared the word of the Lord among the servants of Pharaoh made his servants and his cattle flee into the houses. So there are people in the power structure of Egypt who are taking seriously what Moses is saying, despite the fact that over and over again, Pharaoh himself is saying that he's not moved by anything that Moses is doing. So, yeah, yes, right. And thank you for, and that question is something that's certainly been raised for a very long time within Jewish tradition and is certainly raised very commonly around many Seder tables, I think, in our, in our day. And that is a, that is a big issue and it's, you know, I mean, there's a, I mean, God tells Moses at the very beginning that God is going to harden Pharaoh's heart. Now, God doesn't actually do that until we get a little bit into the plagues, like until plague five or six. Like up until then, Pharaoh hardens his own heart. And so there's this whole, I would say apologetic commentary that runs, you know, once Pharaoh has hardened his own heart five times, then God is just helping the process along at that point, you know? And, but still, God made the prediction from the beginning. So how much, how much freedom does Pharaoh truly have? And is Pharaoh just being, you know, being used in a puppet-like kind of way? And that, it is, it's, I think, I think there's some, you know, now, you have to, we have to, you know, all the while realizing that he is imposing this really terrible oppression on the Israelites, you know? So, but, but maybe, maybe he would have relented much earlier on in the process if God had not been so, you know, so focused on making it go to a certain level. So that's, I think that's an important point and an element in this counter narrative conversation, that Pharaoh is only partially, you know, in charge of his own emotional and spiritual life. Alyssa?
God being powerful though, because it takes it out of the narrative that was typical of that time of it being a God versus another God versus another God. And it, it goes beyond that of just like, I am fighting your enemy because I am your God. And he, God reaches God's hand into the enemy's chest and like hardens this person's heart. And so I think this is one of those moments of supreme power where it comes where it comes out of the old narrative of how gods worked and becomes this new narrative that's really, really important to the Jewish people and what they believe in for a long time after that.
Because, because there's not really multiple, right. So, so, so this, this new, this is, this is moving in the direction of monotheism and the idea that there aren't multiple supernatural, you know, powers at play here. There's one, ultimately, there's really one power. And that's, and that's a, you know, I would say that's a very common interpretation of what this story is all about. It's about, you know, it's about teaching Egypt and teaching the world that there is this new and more truthful way of thinking about, about theology or spirit or, you know, that's, it's a, it's a common, it's a common way of thinking, thinking about it. It, for me, I get, I feel, I have felt worried that when we focus a lot on that, we can neglect this whole other, you know, dimension of like, is, are there, are there, are there rules that this, that this universal power has to follow in terms of how it accomplishes its goals, you know? And that's, that's the, I think that's, you know, and in a way, many people have, or some people have said this, have pointed out that this trial of Moses is in some way a proxy for putting God on trial, although we're not doing that explicitly and we're not saying that. But that's certainly in the background of, and I imagine it's gonna come out in a certain way at the trial and maybe in the, in the panel discussion as well. Okay. All right, so here's, here's where we get to a little bit more of, I think some, you know, we see some different dimensions of Pharaoh himself. So we're in at Exodus 9, 18 through 21, 27 through 34. And, okay. In 27, Pharaoh says for the first time, he calls Moses and Aaron and says, "I have sinned this time. The Lord is righteous and I and my people are wicked." That's a, that's a huge thing for Pharaoh to say, right? Now, Moses then goes and says, "Oh, I know you're not really, you're not really sincere about this," says Moses. "You're not really, you still don't really fear God." But the fact that Pharaoh articulates a sense of regret, "I've sinned, I've done something that I recognize is wrong and I recognize..." Now, we don't necessarily have to agree with Pharaoh about this, but he's really, he's kinda painting this real stark picture like, "My people and I are wicked. The Lord is righteous." I mean, that's, that's a big statement to make. And I don't think Pharaoh gets any credit for that, you know? Now, true, he goes back on his word the very next plague and he's, and he's ready to, you know, continue the process of oppression. But he's, he's said something, the question is, who's in the room when he makes that statement? And is he just talking to Moses and Aaron? Or are his, are his advisors there to witness this acknowledgement that he and his people are wicked? I mean, that's a, that's a very dramatic thing to say. And we don't, we don't always focus on that so much. So I think it's worth pointing out. Okay. Then there are a couple of other moments like that in the narrative in the next section, Exodus 10, where we're talking about, well, first, God is talking to Moses and he, God reiterates that God has hardened Pharaoh's heart. By the way, not just Pharaoh, but the heart of Pharaoh's servants too. We don't always talk about that. God is not just working on Pharaoh here. There are other, other dimensions of God's influence in this conversation. So it's not just Pharaoh. And, um, and then, and then, so it's interesting that in the same paragraph where God states that God is hardening the hearts of Pharaoh's servants, Pharaoh's servants turn to him and basically say, "You know, come on. You're killing us here. You know, let's, just let them go and do what they wanna do. This is really, this is, this is, you're, you're bringing destruction upon our society." And of course, Pharaoh does not agree to do anything. And so the plague comes, and that's in verse 13. And when the locusts arrive, then again, Pharaoh calls for Moses. And now, now he says, I think he goes a step further than last time. He says, "I've sinned against God and I've sinned against you, Moses. And please forgive me. I beg you, my sin only this once and pray to God that this death be taken away from me." So I'm seeing this development over the course of the plagues that Pharaoh is getting more and more, he's, he's just being more and more willing to acknowledge that he is not a God, you know? And that he is not in control. But he's, you know, God is like continuing to push the, push the throttle forward. Because at this point, maybe Pharaoh isn't able to harden his own heart. But God, God makes sure that his heart is hardened at this point. Yeah, okay.
Sorry, this sounds horrible, but isn't God using Pharaoh as a puppet?
Well?
Yeah, he doesn't really have any free will. If, if, if Pharaoh can harden his heart and then soften it and harden it, right?
Well, that is, it's a, it's a big problem. I mean, there are people who try to, there are people who try to like, explain that in a way that doesn't, you know, because the text seems to want to see Pharaoh as an evil person, at least part of it. But we also know that God is really pulling some strings here. So it's, it's, that's part of what makes it a difficult, you know, a troubling text. Right, right. So that, so, so it seems like a setup. Because people, there is a, there are major teams that ask the question, "Why 10 plagues? Why not do it in one? You know, why, why put, why put the population?" And really, more sympathy with the Egyptian population, I think, a little bit than with Pharaoh personally, given what he was doing to the Israelites. But it's, it does seem like God is just stretching out this process. But again, it's a, there's an educational goal that God has stated that God has. So, yeah.
Isn't in the belief of the Egyptian theology at this time that Pharaoh is God?
Yes.
He is Ra, the sun god.
Yes.
Okay, so is it a total obliteration of this god that is necessary for God to achieve? I don't know. I mean, this is, you know?
Right.
Because we're god against god here, a true god and a pretend god.
Right. I think that, I think, I think that's a good, I think that's a good argument. But then I would ask, why not just get rid of Pharaoh? You know, why not just get rid of Pharaoh? Why put the Egyptians through everything that they had to go? I mean, if I were gonna take that point of view, you know? Let God take care of Pharaoh, obviously no problem on that end. But, and we could have an interesting conversation about, well, maybe strategically that, you know, that would have less staying power than somehow putting the whole population through all of these. So, all right, so, yeah, well, and now that would be, you could read this, you could read the story that way. And I think that would be a, that would even, the way Brian just put it is, you know, this is really a, a match between God and Pharaoh. And both the Israelites and the Egyptians are kind of pawns in this power struggle. That makes it a very troubling text, right? Because that's, that's a very, but, but I think that's a, you could read it in that way, all right? Carol and then Alyssa, and then we're gonna go on to the rabbis.
In a way, if you think that this is like monotheism versus other, you know? And that this is God wiping everyone out, less, you know, kind of like, to me, I see it as parallel to taking 40 years to go through the desert to not have that generation remember and possibly idealize something that wasn't. And the same thing of get rid of all the Egyptians because they may still gravitate, you know, forget this day and abandon monotheism and go back to their, their ways of worshiping people, I guess. Or, you know, I mean, I don't know, you know, having multiple gods and maybe. Because it really is about monotheism, I think.
So if that's right, so if that's the case, then, then, yeah, well, and who knows, right?
Yeah.
So I always wonder how much free choice all the people who encounter God have? Because they seem to encounter God and be like, "Oh, like, oh, man. I have to do something really hard now." And I, I wonder if you could see this story as, so if, if Pharaoh is the puppet, then that means that we would see Moses as having free will. So maybe the, there's another element of freeing happening in that by choosing to follow God, that the Israelites are given that freedom of choice and that freedom of adhering to God instead of being, you know, moved around as like a pawn? I don't know if that makes sense, but, so.
That sounds really great. I'm not sure I totally followed, but I think that's, that the Israelites are getting an extra, they're, they're being led toward more freedom because they're not gonna be enslaved anymore. And Moses, but are you saying also that Moses is in some way also a puppet of God? No, you're not, okay, okay. Moses is treated differently by God than, than, than Pharaoh is. And there's a respect that's there for, of personal integrity. And God does turn the screws a little bit on Moses and puts a little, but ultimately, it is Moses who, who makes the decision to be, to do what God is asking him to do. So that there's, there is a movement towards freedom. And I think that's, I think that's a, that is a helpful element of the story and the way we think about the story. And just because we're, we're looking for, you know, maybe to nuance the way that Egypt and Pharaoh are portrayed doesn't mean that the whole story has to, you know, be up for grabs in terms of it's, whether it's, you know, it's what it means and what it's worth to us. But I think, you know, it's, in the way that when Rabbi Sacks rereads the Genesis narratives, he doesn't dispose of them. He just, he brings out an additional dimension that he believes hasn't been seen before. And he believes is built in to the text. And so, you know, maybe there's a way of reading the Exodus story that is, makes room for an awareness of the suffering that the Egyptians had to go through and maybe even an awareness of the sacrifice that Pharaoh has to make. He doesn't really have a choice that God forces Pharaoh to make. All right, this is, this, we could, we could spend all the rest of the time on this, but I, we're, oh my gosh, I can't believe how much time we have left, hardly any. Okay, okay. We are gonna, we are gonna take a quick look. There's some really amazing rabbinic texts about the Exodus, some of which I've never seen, I had never seen before I was getting ready for this session. And you know what, actually? Maybe we'll just, maybe the easiest thing to do, let's just flip over the Jonathan Sacks. These are the, these are the end of the rabbinic texts, but there's some just fascinating things in here. So the top of the page is the Babylonian Talmud, Brachod 63B. And so this, I would say, is in the category of looking at the Exodus story through the evolutionary lens and seeing, "Okay, here's a different layer of Jewish civilization reading this text and what do they, what do they derive from it?" And this, the text that we're gonna look at is not specifically about Pharaoh or Egypt, but I think it has implications for the story. So who would like to read this short? God bless you. Who'd like to read this short text? Okay, all right?
I'm willing to read it because I don't understand it. It was taught, quotes, "From among the grandchildren of Haman were those that studied Torah in Benay Brak." Now, those, those were the rabbis in the Haggadah who studied at Benay Brak and their grandchildren of Haman, all right?
Yeah.
One. "From among the grandchildren of Sisera were those that taught infants in Jerusalem." Now, Sisera was a general, wasn't he?
Yes, he was.
Who got his head chopped off by, okay. And he also taught infants in Jerusalem. And "from among the grandchildren of Sanchariv," is that Sinakirib?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, "were those that taught Torah to the masses." Who were they? Shemiah and Avtalion, teachers of Hillel. So does this basically Apokson Hillel?
Well, that's one way of reading it, Apokson Hillel. But, or, you know, the, you know, the flip side is, and I don't know, and I didn't check, I didn't check the original, whether grandchildren or descendants would be a better, it seems to me that descendants probably works better than grandchildren, but I didn't see the original Hebrew. But the idea that someone who has been horrific to the community could actually have descendants that could play an important positive role in the community. To me, you know, this is, it's, it breaks down the monolithic nature of who someone is that, because there's a, I think we have a tendency, again, this goes back to kind of our group orientation, that when, when there's an enemy, you just see everything connected to that person as being negative and evil. And so here's a text that says, "The descendants of these horrible enemies of the Jewish people." I mean, what if it said, I mean, you know, this is kinda like, I mean, for people reading this, this would be like saying like, "The descendants of Hitler, you know, did something good for the Jewish people." I mean, it's, it's almost hard to utter those words. But I mean, that's kinda the implication of this text. And it's, it's pretty shocking. You know, Shemiah and Avtalion, you know, Hillel is the most beloved rabbinic teacher ever. And so basically, they're saying, and, and the general, I think this was the Assyrian general who wiped out the northern kingdom of the ten tribes, that his descendants ended up raising, you know, the teacher Hillel and, and, and basically turning him into a teacher himself. So it's, it's a, it's a pretty intense text, but it's, it's interesting. I just never seen it before. So let's, let's go to, and these are, these are not all, none of these are super easy texts, but let's see. Anyone who has not read yet? Okay.
"When God sent the plague of the firstborn, all the firstborn Egyptians went to speak to their fathers and said, 'Everything which Moses has said has come true. Don't you want us to live? Let us get the Hebrew slaves out of our homes now, otherwise we are dead.' The fathers answered, 'Even if all of Egypt dies, they are not leaving.' All the firstborn gathered in front of Pharaoh and screamed, 'Please remove the Hebrews. Because of them, evil will befall us and you.' Pharaoh said to his servants, 'Remove the protesters and break their knees.' What did the young Egyptians do? Each took a sword and killed his father."
I know, it's a very, it's a rough one, it's a rough one, but it, it is a, you know, it does create some, in terms of a view of Egyptian culture and a view, especially of the firstborn, you know, and how they respond. And the relationship that they seem to have with, with Moses and what he has accomplished so far. And, you know, they are the rational actors, you know, at least, they're, they're trying to get people to listen to them and no one is listening to them. And, and they, in the end, they, they take very extreme action. And, and the person who, who wrote about this text claimed that, you know, basically, this text might be here to show why the firstborn deserved to die in the plague because they, you know, did something so horrific as to kill their own father. But I think that it's, you know, again, it just shows that there is a sense that, that within the Egyptian context, that the rabbis could imagine that there were multiple perspectives of how to respond to the situation. And, and not just Pharaoh, but some of the elders of the community were intent on having the entire ship go down if necessary because, because of the principle that they were not going to because of the principle that they were not going to let the slaves go free. Any other thoughts about this? Yeah, Greg?
Yeah, so the line of, "The father answered, 'Even if all of Egypt dies, they are not leaving,' makes the onus on the Israelites that, look, we would open the doors and kick them out, but they don't want to leave. Even if we're no more, they're not leaving." That's kind of what I get from that.
Oh, that's interesting. Okay, that's a totally different way of reading it than I was looking at. I was reading it as them saying, "Even if it costs the death of the entire Egyptian society, we are not going to let them go." But that's, that could be, that they are making a choice. It's, and I don't know, again, I did not, I did not check the original. And even if we did, it might, there's no guarantee that it would clarify the ambiguity.
Maybe just as there are different interpretations and subtleties within the Egyptians, there are different interpretations and subtleties within the Israelites as well. We seem to interpret that all of the community of Israelites was dead set on leaving, although we know, once they depart, there's certainly a lot of muttering and a lot of, "Well, we had it good, why did we leave? How come we're doing this?" So maybe there wasn't as unified of a front as sometimes we think there is in the Israelites that they had to leave. And perhaps the plagues are also for the Israelites to get out, to demonstrate that the Israelites need to leave and not just that the Egyptians need to let them leave.
That's great, thank you, that's very interesting. Ruth?
Not all of the, not all of the Israelites left. Well, some remained, they couldn't leave.
So say more about that. Just, I mean, I think there is a...
There were, I don't know the exact text, of course, or the number, but there were a number of Israel slaves who remained in Egypt because of fear of what might happen in the future. And they knew that they could stay.
So, that, I have definitely seen midrashim that say, that make that argument. And that would go along very nicely with what Greg was saying too, that there is this spectrum within the Israelites. And we see it later on, right? As Greg said, when people are kind of wishing that they were back. Some people are wishing they were back in Egypt. So that's, that helps too, to not see the Israelites as monolithic if we're not going to see the Egyptians as monolithic. So, all right, let's do, the next one is pretty interesting, from the Mechilte, to Rabbi Ishmael. And anyone else who has not read? Okay.
I love this one. "To the firstborn of the captive, but how did the captive sin? It was only that the captive should not say, 'Our deity brought this visitation upon the Egyptians. Our deity is strong, for it stood up for itself. Our deity is strong, for the visitation did not prevail over us.'" Another interpretation, "This is to teach you that the captives used to rejoice over every decree which Pharaoh decreed against Israel. For it is said, 'He that is glad at calamity shall not be unpunished.' And the captives alone acted thus, but also the Egyptian manservants and maidservants. For it is said, even the firstborn of the maidservant and all the firstborn of the cattle. But how did the cattle sin? It was only that the Egyptians should not say, 'Our own deity has brought this visitation upon us. Our deity is strong, for it stood up for itself. Our deity is strong, for this visitation did not prevail over it.'"
Okay, so this is a pretty, this is a really interesting text, right? Because it asks the question, it actually asks the question, you know, why did, you know, it only asked about the captive and the manservant and the maidservant, but, you know, and the cattle, you know, why those firstborn? You know, what did they do? It raises a moral question about this, the 10th plague. And the answers are not super satisfying from a moral point of view, right? It's really about this theological education, right? It's, you know, lest people get the wrong idea about the nature of the universe, we are going to make sure that everyone's 100% clear. Again, this is, these are, some rabbis wrote this, right? I mean, this is not, I'm not saying this is the entire rabbinic tradition, but there's a perspective that this represents that is aware of the moral problem and implicitly recognizes it. But then, I think in its response, you know, and the people who asked this question were writing from, you know, within a particular context and, you know, didn't have, they had their own cultural constraints that they were working within. But I think it's fascinating that this text exists.
The term captive here refers to non-H Hebrew captives in Egypt.
Correct, that's right. So a non, right, so a non-H Hebrew, probably non-Egyptian, you know, maybe even non-Egyptian, maybe Egyptian, I mean, I don't know, it's a good question. But someone who's clearly not part of the Pharaoh's leadership, you know, who's going to suffer to make a point for the entire Egyptian society. And the author of this text is pointing that out. I saw a hand over here somewhere. Yeah.
When it says that the captives used to rejoice over every decree and then, so, "He that is glad at calamity shall not be unpunished," couldn't that also be like turned around for when Egypt is totally punished? And if Jews like rejoice at that entirely, they'll be punished as well?
Yes, I mean, in that, we have a little bit of a, you know, we didn't see that text tonight, but it's probably the most well-known text in this kind of a conversation about the angels who are celebrating. That gets misquoted all the time. I actually did it myself a couple of years ago when we were at Cedar Sinai synagogue and we were having this whole conversation about the Middle East. And I brought up that text and I misquoted it as God rebuking the Israelites, but it's actually God rebuking the angels for celebrating. But there is, it's a rebuke, you know, for celebrating at the downfall of other human beings. So, let's conclude, let's see, we're pretty close, I think. Oh, we're over. Oh, let's, you know what, let's just do this. Do we have two minutes to do the Zohar one? Okay, Nancy, do you want to do this? It's, this is a pretty interesting one too. Yeah, yeah.
"And the magicians of Egypt, they also did in like manner with their enchantments. For they wanted to oppose the wonderful works of the Holy One, blessed be he. When they saw the signs and the wonders which Moses wrought in Egypt, they came to Moses to be converted. Said the Holy One to Moses, did not receive them. Moses, however, replied, 'Sovereign of the universe, now that they have seen your power, they deserve to accept our faith. Let them see your power every day, and they will learn that there is no God like you.' And Moses accepted them."
So this is, I love this text too because this, you know, we see texts all the time where Moses stands up for the Israelites when God is about to, you know, God gets angry and God says, "I'm going to wipe everybody out and start over with you." And then Moses always has a great argument to dissuade God from doing that. So it's like Moses is doing the same thing here for the Egyptian magicians, where they really seem to be interested in joining the tribe and God is opposing it and Moses comes up with an argument and kind of convinces God, or at least convinces God not to prevent it from happening. And Moses becomes this welcomeer. So I think it's, that's just a, you know, the fact that you could have someone write a text in which the magicians, who are the ones that, you know, Pharaoh's first weapons against this whole process, become the ones who want to join the community and Moses is their champion for allowing it to happen is, I think that's kind of a powerful statement. So, I'm sorry we didn't get to, we just, I'm happy to hand out, I have another whole sheet, if you want to take it with you, of rabbinic texts on this. You know what, this could be great Seder material, I'm just saying. So I will, I'll put the sheets out and Nancy, you have a question? The us and them is breaking down. Right, right, right. Well, right, it's right, the author of this text sees God as really being, you know, a stickler for not wanting that to happen. So, thank you, everybody, for coming this evening. And I hope that we'll get to see, the trial, I think, is going to be really great and interesting. And I anticipate that some of these texts might actually get used in the legal arguments and/or in the panel conversation. And it should be a great evening. Thanks.